Just a reminder before we get started, if you do have a cell phone, please turn it off or turn it on silent. If you don't mind. All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the invocation and pledge by the Honorable Mary Sierra Wood.
Can you bow with me please? Our heavenly Father would come to you tonight and give you all the control over our mind and to help us to understand the things that we're going to be voting here on tonight. And help us to be aware and vote our conscience, Lord, for the best for the citizens of Newberry County and the county. Please be with and heal a lot of these COVID patients, Lord. There's so many around here that we keep hearing about that's in the hospital or passing away. And it's really nobody but you can bring us through this. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all of you to the county council meeting. We really appreciate you being here, participating, and be involved in the county government. The other thing I would like to say is welcome to all council members who are actually here live and well tonight, so thank you and we'll get started. Item number one, do we have a motion to adopt the present agenda? Motion by Mr. Nick Shealy, second by Mr. Scurry. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Additions, deletions. Do we have any additions or deletions to the council meeting agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Motion by Ms. Sierra Wood, second by Mr. Les Hill. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three, ordinance number 01-0121, an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2020-2021. According to number 041420, to provide for the revised revenue and expenditure appropriations related to operating and capital purposes of Newberry County. This is the second reading. Mr. Adams, do you want to address that?
Yes, Chairman. This is an amendment to our existing ordinance, our existing budget ordinance. It adds more than eight hundred acres of economic development property to the county's inventory. It's a budget of about twelve point three million dollars, however, requires no new property tax. And that is largely because of CPST funds or penny sales tax funds from the past. Our own fund balance, which is still going to be healthy even after we contribute the funds necessary for this budget ordinance. Also, there's going to be a separate item tonight on a special source revenue bond, which will help fund the purchase of additional property contained in here. And that all adds up to no property tax increase with a lot of additional product that we can show to prospects who are hungry to locate in Newberry County. Couple of the things that this does, it opens up one hundred and thirty additional acres in the original Mid-Carolina Commerce Park by crossing the creek. It adds about two hundred acres across the road next to the Mid-Carolina Country Club Golf Course. We look to auction an additional three hundred acres along Highway seven seventy-three. In addition, we also have the Newberry South Park on Thirty-Four Bypass, which is one hundred ninety-two point forty-five acres. The only thing that is in here, doesn't involve property, is a grant for the expansion of an existing industry in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
All right, you've heard the explanation. Do we have a motion to just be the second reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Scurry. Any discussion? You, Mr. You.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just had a question. One of the things, it goes forward to the number five on our agenda. The ordinance for funding through the special source revenue bond. When we had our work session, this was one of the things that I had a significant concern about, and that was not part of it. What has changed to add that to it?
Of course, the ordinance requires three readings. And the third reading of the SSRB ordinance would not be until the day after the state fiscal accountability authority meets and makes its decision.
So we didn't discuss this in our work session, this ordinance in our work session. I guess that's why.
I think that I mentioned that we would have to have a bond ordinance associated with this in order to issue the debt for the SSRBs. But there would not have to be a third reading of it until after there has been a meeting of the SFAA to decide on whether they would indeed allow Newberry County to issue the special source revenue bonds.
So right now, we are scheduled to have third reading before we know whether or not the SSRB.
Actually, it's the day after. Yep. The SFAA meeting is on February second. And I think we can provide a link to that actually for you to watch at ten o'clock on that day, ten AM. And then the council meets the next evening at six PM and could decide if it wants to at that point not to go forward with third reading of either ordinance.
Okay. All right, Mr. Johnson?
Just a quick clarification, and this is not one of those ticky tack things, just so that we're abundantly clear with everybody. While we aren't raising property taxes, we are extending the length of one note that we have that is being paid out of the fee in loose. Is that correct?
You actually won't be raising property taxes.
Not raising anything, but you are extending a note that's paid from another source.
And the recent news that I got yesterday on that, we were planning on a twenty-year note to extend the existing two point one million dollars that we owe plus the new property purchases. But it looks like with the rate that we're going to get, it's going to be more like a seventeen and a half year note.
Okay, great. Just in full disclosure of what's going on, so nobody doesn't look around and go, wait a minute, you said nothing new, and there is a little bit added on.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, second reading?
Can I say one more?
Yes, absolutely.
Initially, I was very opposed to this, but this has been put together so well, so well explained, so documented financially, that I'm just impressed with it, and I think that after much prayer, that it's the right move for our county. So the preparation and the groundwork made the difference for me, so I appreciate that.
And the interest rates.
And the interest rate. There's never been a better time to borrow money than right now. That is for sure.
And the interest rates, yes. All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number four, ordinance number eleven dash twenty-four dash twenty. An ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning number six eleven sixteen, codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinance, so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling fifty-two point nine acres designated as TMS parcel number six three one dash twelve, tract eight, from a single-family residential R S to a rural R two to single-family residential. All right, this is second reading. Do we have a motion to just be second reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Scurry. All right, Mr. Adams, you want to address that one or?
Chairman, we have several guests here tonight to talk about the varying perspectives on this ordinance. We would be, through this ordinance, rezoning this parcel from two designations. It has a split zoning designation right now from a single-family residential and rural R two to RSM, our single-family residential, which would allow for relatively small lots. I think as small as fifteen thousand square feet per lot. So the density of the development is one of the issues. There's also, I've met with Amanda Moss who's here. Amanda, she will speak to you in just a minute. The developers are here, Mike Satterfield, Scott Morrison, and Rob Links are here. I think at least some of you are signed up to speak as well, and they will give you their take on whether or not this ordinance is good for the county. We did meet to answer with Ms. Moss, who is the community representative, and the developers to answer a number of questions. There still remain some differences on some of the issues, and that's what you'll hear, I think, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow those people signed up to speak to come forward at this time.
All right, typically, just for your information, we generally have the general public comments at the end. Before we take a vote on something, it's just protocol that we try to let y'all go ahead and speak ahead of time. So if you did sign up for public comments and are not called on this time, it's because you're not on this topic. Amanda Moss.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have been in meetings with the developers, the builders, and Mr. Adams. And the community, well, myself, my land, my father's land, and the Williams' land butts up against the development of that fifty-two point nine. I also met with the lady with the zoning and planning, and she's assured me that with D. Heck and all, they would make sure that our land was not affected by this development, which that is a major concern of us, being that we would be right on impacted for it. But my community in Pomeria slash part of Prosperity, our main concerns are three really big points. And the main one is the strain on our schools, our schools and our buses, our teachers. As I was in the meeting with Mr. Adams, he did contact one of the school board members, and she pretty much stated the same thing I had already gathered information on. Our three elementary schools, Pomeria Garment, Prosperity Riker, and Little Mountain Elementary, they're at full capacity already. The middle school, Mid-Carolina Middle School, is at capacity. The high school is a hundred kids before they'll be at capacity. So you're talking of bringing in eighty to ninety-five homes on this fifty-two point nine acres. But the statistics are stating that two kids per household is an average. And so you're looking at anywhere from a hundred and ninety to two hundred kids approximately when that whole development is done. The second thing is our emergency services. Pomeria line, I spoke with Tommy Long, and he's over the emergency services. And the line for Pomeria is at the interstate. So Pomeria Fire Department, Pomeria Rescue would respond to any of those structured fires or any kind of emergency that's medical. Now, if it's a structured fire, yes, there are two different departments that will respond, so Pomeria would get some help. But the vast majority of it would fall on Pomeria, fire and rescue. The police is another concern. When we had a little, small, informal community meeting, Lee Foster and the mayor of Pomeria was also invited. And we addressed it to Lee Foster about the police presence. He had stated that it's a possibility that they could redraw some structure lines of getting more police in the area, being that you would have that many more people in the area. So he's looking into that. So we did want to address that part, because usually now if we have an emergency in Pomeria and the policeman might be in Whitmire, it's going to take thirty, forty minutes for them to respond. So that was a concern of ours. The last one is the traffic. The traffic is going to be just like the children. Statistics state two cars per household. That's minimum. And you're adding another hundred and ninety to two hundred cars in this small little area. Jolly Street Road, I mean, it's a back, you know, it's not a major highway. Seven seventy-three is a lot better. But again, we've got a concrete plant going in right below Jolly Street Road going heading toward Pomeria. We don't have a turn lane for those big trucks. I don't know what they're going to do. They're, you know, getting stuff moved in. We have already had major wrecks at the intersection of Jolly Street Road and seven seventy-three. And we don't have this extra population of people and cars and all. People in Pomeria understand that we need rooftops to grow Newberry County. We know that. We're just concerned that the community is going to lose what we have, the country field, the rural area. We're just mainly concerned from that and the traffic. The traffic is going to be a problem. I know this. I'm hoping it's not going to be a fatality. There are certain accidents that have happened that have almost been a fatality. People fly down that road. We have, you know, told the police, they have actually sat in our driveway as a speed trap sort of thing, you know, to try to get people to quit flying up and down that road. I actually live at the bottom of that hill, so by that time, those people are at full force when they hit the bottom of that hill and go past Gen House Road. But those are the concerns that the community has. We don't want it to impact us to a point that we become Lexington County chaperon. You know, I understand, I mean, there's a bunch of people in Lexington County that wishes they didn't go down to a fourth of an acre to build homes there. There's a little postage stamp, you know, I understand that, and they're trying to backtrack it, and the builders are digging in their heels. They don't want to backtrack. So we're just trying to stop it before it goes any further. You know, if a half an acre, if we could just compromise a little bit, maybe do a half acre. And then see, because once this passes, it's going to be a precedence for Newberry County. And then you're going to have other lots that are going to try to get their size of lots or what is on the properties changed. And then we're going to be boomed, you know, right out. So I appreciate it. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Moss?
I have one. Just to make sure I understood, it seemed to me that your biggest concern was reducing the zone from allowing one home per acre to this eighty to ninety-five homes per the fifty-two acres. Would you have an objection to this development under the current zoning restriction of one house per acre?
No, sir. I don't think we would have any objection to that. What I've talked to the builders about, their estimate is approximately two and a half homes per acre. I think it's what it estimates to. I don't know if they got the more legal jargon of it, but that's what I'm hearing. But it's fifteen thousand square foot, which is approximately maybe a third, maybe a little bit more than a third of an acre. But they would be more in line to talk about that. But I don't think an acre is a problem for us. And I understand that it's someone else's property, and we're not trying to, I wouldn't want someone to tell us what we need to do with our property. But if it affects the impact like it's going to be in Pomeria for our whole community, I just felt like that we needed to at least let our voices be heard.
Have you had opportunity to talk to anybody that was dealing with the census?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Have you had an opportunity to talk to anyone that was dealing with the census?
The statistics that I said or?
The census.
Census. Not to mind that. Andrew Boozer might have all that. He's more computer savvy, and he might have some of that for you.
Okay, because what I understand is that they are based on the numbers that we had during the census, that they may be redistricting the areas.
But are you more like talking how the schools would be affected?
Yes.
Well, either school, you've only got three elementary schools right there, Little Mountain, Prosperity Riker, Pomeria Garment. You've already taken up all three of those elementary. They're at capacity now. You've only got one middle school in the whole area. It's at capacity. The high school's a hundred students from being full, and that came from a school board member. And Mr. Adams was there, and the builders were there when we all heard this. So other than that, I, so thank you.
Anything, okay, Ms. Sierra?
I think I spoke with you today, and you talked about this concrete plant, and you said that it would be gone in two years.
Two to three. They're doing a short-term lease is what I was told from like before, the first meeting or thereabouts. It's supposed to be a short-term lease.
That's going to be going away, and that would help some.
It is going away, depending on when and how the interstate construction and all that goes. That's what we're told. Yes, ma'am.
All right, other questions for Ms. Moss, Mr. Johnson?
Just, I think that you, I enjoyed talking to you yesterday afternoon, by the way, and it's clear you have a sweet spirit. And we appreciate you coming and being a part of this. That's huge to the way government runs. Based on, you've aptly stated the problem is we need rooftops, and wherever you go, there's going to be a growth issue. So having met with those builders and kind of, if you could step back just a second, do you see a path forward where we reconcile both of these, that we could gain rooftops and still accommodate some of the needs of the community as well, such as address the traffic issues and address those issues so that we can gain both?
Well, I spoke with Scott right before the meeting, and I was telling him, you know, if we could just come to a compromise. You know, I understand they're in the business to make money. I mean, that's what their business is for. But, you know, I think a happy compromise would be a half an acre at best, but I'm not sure if they're willing to do that. But I think the community would be a little bit happier about it. I understand that they have to put so many in to be able to make their margins and all, and to make it beneficial for them. And I understand that the land is going to be developed, one way or another. And we're trying to help with the process to keep it within the Newberry community's guidelines to where we're not looking back ten years later, fifteen years later going, oh, my gosh, you know, we turned out just like Lexington County, and we had a chance to stop it. Or to curb it, you know, not stop it, because we want the growth. We want the grocery stores. We want the outlet stores and, you know, industrial, the industrial park and stuff like that, which that will add traffic to that small little seven seventy-three. Because, you know, I lived on seven seventy-three when it was just Berlin Beetham Mall's gas station, and there was hardly anything there, you know. But, you know, we're seeing progress, and yes, we're going to need rooftops. I understand that, and so does the community.
Good. Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Amanda. Andrew Boozer?
Thank you, Chairman Livingston, and council members for giving the community an opportunity to speak on this. As I look at the agenda, I think we should have named this the seven seventy-three agenda, because it appears to all impact our daily lives directly. But thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is something that's near and dear to our hearts. My name's Andrew Boozer. I live. My name's Andrew Boozer. I live, uh, just one parcel away from the proposed property. There's one stretch of pine trees between me and the development. Uh, and I just want to, um, I want to reiterate that the proposed rezoning does not mirror the community that surrounds it. And it, to me and to others, represents a fundamental shift in what our community looks like. Uh, rezoning is gonna usher in a new era of development for our community. And if this era is allowed, we're gonna see more out-of-county developers moving into our community and subdividing our lands into small lots and straining our resources. And none of us that I've talked to in the community are against development, but we want to be smart about it and have something we can be proud of, not only now, but in the years and the generations to come. And one of, needs to look no farther than our neighbors over in Lexington County, who you probably are already aware, county council there, is wrestling with how to reverse course on their zoning practices from decades ago because high-density residential developments have so strained the resources in their communities that now the communities are suffering and can't handle the high density. And while I know this one project does not equal, uh, housing congestion at that level, I see it as the first step in that direction. It is the tip of the spear that will allow that sprawl to invade our rural community. And I do not support this rezoning, and I hope you don't either. However, if you take action tonight and in the coming weeks to approve this rezoning, or perhaps a compromise, the responsibility that this and the future developments will follow the best practices for all large residential subdivisions, both in their development and in their upkeep. And it's also gonna require an increase on your part to support our community that is going to be rapidly changing. You'll need to proactively work with our school board to make sure our schools can handle the growth. You'll need to work with SEDOT to make sure every local, state, and federal dollar for roads is allocated to that area of the county. You will need to adequately support our emergency services so that they can continue their high level of excellence now that they'll have increased demand. And you'll need to dedicate the resources for our community and recreational spaces, which quite frankly, compared to other areas of the county, falls far behind. And now, as I stated, I don't support this zoning committee, and I urge you to vote, or this zoning change, and I urge you to vote against it. But if it does pass, it cannot be business as usual in Pomeria. If you pass this zoning request, your new and expanded responsibilities in our community are only beginning. And me and my neighbors are gonna hold you to it. 'Cause we hold you, we will hold you accountable for the growth that's coming into our community. Now, thank you for your time tonight.
Any questions for Andrew?
Um, okay, Mr. Adams? Just, just kind of a comment. Um, appreciate you coming as with Ms. Moss. Um, are there any community members that you're aware of that have spoke in favor of this at the, uh, planning, uh, zoning meeting? Or are here tonight to speak in favor of this?
There have been none present at any meeting that we have had. I'm aware, you can welcome to friend me on Facebook. Uh, I'm aware of one community member out of many, many dozens that have commented on, on my, comments on this proposed action since back in October. I'm, I'm aware of one, uh, of dozens that has spoken in favor. And, 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 Mr. Hip, if I may, I believe you spoke about the, the one acre, uh, with Ms. Moss was speaking. You may be aware, across from St. Paul's Church, just a few years ago, we actually had developments that were about one acre. Uh, and those have been wonderful neighbors to our community. And we certainly welcome new rooftops and understand we want new families and, and life's gonna look different, uh, for my children than it is for when I grew up, just like it was different when I grew up from when my mom grew up here. Um, but we want to make sure something.
So, am I to understand then that, uh, as with Ms. Moss, that, uh, you would be fine with the development under the current zoning regulations?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, other questions? Mr. Adams?
Just to, uh, let council know this, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the zoning right now on this parcel is divided between RS and R2. Uh, the RS portion allows for twenty thousand square feet lots, and the R2 portion is one acre lots. Uh, I don't, I don't have it right now. I'm sorry, I don't.
Mr. Adams, while you're, uh, standing there, or? Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Uh, are you aware of any other, um, developments in the county of this size in an area, uh, with this density rating?
Uh, there is, uh, one development that's going through the planning commission right now. It's already been rezoned. Uh, it's down on Lake Murray, and it involves what's called cluster homes. And I think the lots may be even somewhat smaller than this, Ron?
I believe they go down to ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Twenty, it can go down to seventy-five hundred.
Can go down to seventy-five hundred.
So how many, uh, homes are, are projected in that?
Uh, up to a hundred and forty, I think. Uh, not all of them are gonna be on the cluster, but most of them are gonna be cluster homes. There's some bigger lots in that development. And that's going through the, uh, planning commission stages right now for approval.
It, it has not been yet approved?
Uh, well, it, it's been approved for rezoning by the county council. As long as they meet all the requirements in the ordinance, uh, then it has to be approved by staff. We don't really have the, uh, authority not to approve it.
All right, thank you, Andrew, for coming forward. Appreciate your comments. Next for Jolly Street is Becky Bowland.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for hearing from me tonight. I'm Becky Bowland. I live right down Coon Tressle Road, about a mile from where this, um, development's going to be. Um, I obviously chose Coon Tressle for a reason, and it seems that we're fighting uphill on a couple of things in that area. Like Andrew alluded to, this is the seven seventy-three gang, it seems like, that we are, um, here for tonight. I have a question, though, about the two different areas. They're already zoned differently. So if we were to get a vote of yes for y'all to move forward, we're gonna have the third of an acre lots. If you vote no on our side, so to speak, with the community's outcry, would it be, they could still go forward with the twenty thousand square feet and then with the acre lots? Is that correct?
Right now, they could do twenty thousand square foot lots on part of the property.
Okay.
And one acre lots on the other part of the property.
So it looks like, so it looks like we have two different battles, so to speak. Is that correct in saying that? 'Cause we're kind of, kind of scared of the twenty thousand still, and then the acre, am I correct in understanding that? 'Cause I didn't realize there were two separate zonings already, I guess.
Um, pardon me, they wanna go down to fifteen thousand square feet of lot, which is a different zoning designation from either of them.
Okay, okay, so it's changing it both, no matter what. Okay, awesome. So obviously, you heard from Andrew and Amanda, and they had all of the great statistics and all of the great, um, you know, this, the work they did before they got here. I came here with nothing but heart and mouth, and so, uh, but what that's gonna do is just tell you that, you know, again, we built on Coon Tressle for a reason. Um, I've got four kids. Um, they're all gonna be looking for rooftops way sooner than I would, um, care to even imagine. So we know that there is a need for rooftops, however. Um, I'm not necessarily going to say I agree with that we need fifty houses in that fifty-acre lot for the same exact reasons that's already been stated. I don't even know that that can be supported there. Um, yes, that, that one acre minimum is already set in place for a reason. Um, but I think most of you, um, from driving down that area and living in that area, will, uh, you could probably say that you haven't seen fifty acre, or fifty houses and fifty acres very often driving around here. Um, so I do encourage you to go even past the compromise idea, going past keeping everything the way we have it with the degree of, um, community, safety. Um, I'm a past teacher for Newberry County School District, so I can tell you something like that popping up in six months or nine months, whatever that's gonna look like, will definitely be detrimental to the school system. Those people will be zoned for Pomeria-Garminy. If they are doing some changes with the school zones that was alluded to a little while ago, I didn't even realize that. And if that's the case, that's another whole argument for another day, 'cause we were in that a couple of years ago when my kids were at Pomeria-Garminy. Um, so I hope that's not gonna come true, 'cause they don't need to rezon that. Those people are Pomeria area, and they need to be supported at Pomeria-Garminy, um, and go through that system. But they can't handle that. And if it's like, my house, there's gonna be four kids and six cars for every house. So we're not gonna look at just the fact that there's two people driving, or maybe they have two point five kids. You could be looking at a lot more than what you're even thinking about statistic-wise, 'cause families are growing, so that's something else to consider. It's not all black and white on paper. But I just wanted to add that. So thank you, Amanda and Andrew, for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. And I definitely hope that you will consider voting this, um, not to happen and opening up the road for some further stuff down in the future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, once again, I have, uh,
Okay.
a comment to, to, uh, Mr. Adams, I didn't understand that we currently exactly had the two, with the, the two different density levels. Uh, it would matter percentage-wise as to the number of houses, so under the current zoning with the twenty thousand and the one acre, what density could this fifty-two acres support? What number of houses, because like I said, ten percent R2 is a lot different, maybe than ninety percent R2.
You, you'd have to look at the layout of the subdivision and how much road space is gonna be taken up, green space.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, right now, today's zoning, under today's requirements, how many homes did that?
I, I'm not sure what part of it is the RS and which is R2, so I can't tell you. I don't know the proportions right off the bat.
See, that would make a big difference than the potential density of the property.
It would. And of course, the, the twenty thousand square feet is a little less than half an acre. I think Taylor's gonna try to pull up on GIS here, what, what we can. Um, can you pull up the zoning? Let's do her work, see if she can. Alex, I turn it all on. Let's concentrate on one, on one screen if we can, 'cause there is this problem we haven't worked out yet. We, we got, we turn some TVs on and turns others off. We haven't figured this out yet. But, um, so let's just, these two screens will be fine, Taylor. We can just hit on these two.
Okay. It's, uh, it'll be the six thirty-one dash twelve right there.
Six thirty-one dash twelve is here. Okay, this is where it joins seven seventy-three. But do we have the, um, and then still, we have to look at topo. I guess, I, I guess it's probably not so much a topo issue with the residential development, but, um, can we pull up the zoning later?
You remember Ron, his brother, we had the half of it.
Get this straight, yeah, yeah.
Yes, please.
I've done a little research on this and attended the, uh, the zoning, uh, commission meeting on this back in October to give you a lay of land for, for that piece of property. Now approach one of the screens, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, why don't you just take one, come right here.
There's an existing home structure at the corner of Jolly Street and Highway seven seventy-three. To the best of my recollection, uh, in the zoning commission, the, the residential portion is here surrounding the home.
Oh, okay.
Uh, when I was a child, this was cow pasture here, and across the road here. Uh, and that was what, the pasture land was what was on this world. I don't have the official map, obviously, but let me give you some sense. It's here, close to Highway seven seventy-three where the home site is. There's a residential. Uh, and back here in the timberland, otherwise, uh, the grazing pasture was what was on this world.
So you think that the, uh, RS portion is just up front here that home?
Yes, sir.
Existing home?
It's down by one different neighborhood.
Uh, I don't, I do like to say that. Okay, we're trying to find the, uh, uh, zoning layout here. But if that's the case, Mr. Hip, then most of this is gonna be one acre lots.
That's, which is very relevant to our discussion, I think.
I think we're gonna have to operate in that assumption.
I think that's probably a valid assumption based on just looking at it.
The vast majority of the, the one acre lots.
Mm-hmm.
It's the best possible.
Okay.
Other thing is regardless of where we go, if we pass it, we still can get that information for before and third and final reading if that's, uh, that's an issue too, because, uh, we, we do have that luxury at this point. Are, are y'all okay with me moving on and letting Mike speak, and then if they find it during that time period, we'll go back and address that then?
All right, Mr. Mike Satterfield?
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks, uh, thanks for being here. Um, I really, uh, I didn't, I didn't sign up tonight to go into great detail, but as I sit here and listen, I thought maybe I could answer or try to answer some of the questions or issues that were, uh, brought up a few minutes ago. Um, real quickly, uh, I'm Mike Satterfield. I'm CEO of Great Southern Homes, and we're a residential builder developer, uh, located in Ermo. Uh, we build all over the state. We're privately held company, not a, um, publicly held, if you will. Um, you know, we've had an interest in this site for, for a little bit, um, I can tell you. Um, I've been doing this a long time, and, and, you know, while I'm very sympathetic to the folks that, that live in that, that area, I'm a, I'm a resident of Newberry County myself, and actually live on that side of the interstate. Um, you know, the, the, the growth is, is, is coming. Um, you know, it's kinda, seven seventy-three's the next band out. Um, you know, from my perspective, there's a, uh, there's a need, um, in, in the county for, for rooftops, for, for a number of reasons, you know, whether it be to, um, you know, upgrade some of the facilities and things that you have, grocery stores and whatnot. I mean, it's the, it's the chicken and the egg. One doesn't come without the other. Um, you know, and, um, while, while some folks may not wanna, wanna hear it, it's, uh- Um you know, and um while while some folks may not wanna wanna hear it, it's uh it can be reality. Um you know, Lexington County was mentioned, and yeah, it it's challenging in Lexington County. Uh you know, um uh this site is not anywhere near that, nor is Newberry County at this point. I mean, you know, I sat at the corner of Jolly Street and seven seventy-three after coming from one seventy-six this morning, and I counted ten cars at ten till late, um you know, through all the way through the run, and 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 while I sat at the corner at the old house there, um so you know, it's it's hard for me to sit there and and see it compared to Lexington, because we're not there. You know, when we talk about um, you know, eighty-eight lots, uh it's actually an average of one point seven lots uh per acre is what it is. Um rather big for today, to be quite honest with you. I mean, you've talked about the seventy-five hundred lots that are happening down around the lake, uh there's a lot, a lot of that goes on for a number of reasons today, and some of which is geared by who the buyer is, you know, um you know, the, I never thought I'd say it, but I've been building and developing for forty years, but you know, big lots are not very popular anymore, I'll be totally honest with you. Uh there's some of the buyers that prefer them, but there are a lot more uh in today's world between empty nesters and the millennials that uh that do not. Um but at one point seven and eighty-eight lots, uh as we talk about the impact on the community, um all that's not gonna happen overnight. I can tell you, you know, if you look at an average sales pace uh for a community within uh, you pick it, Risen County, Lexington County, whatever it is, um that average is somewhere around two houses per month, twenty-four, pace of twenty-four a year. Um you know, we have probably a hundred communities statewide. I can tell you, if I have one that does three a month, it it's a barn burner, and very few do more than that. Our average as a company is probably a little less than two sales per month. So so this eighty-eight isn't gonna happen overnight. It's gonna, this is just gonna be drawn out over 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 um, what, at at twenty-four, that's almost uh almost four years, um for for a complete build-out, uh so it's not immediate shock to to the community. Um you know, when you talk about half acre, one acre, I can tell you, from from our perspective, if that's where this goes, uh we're not an interested party, because with today's infrastructure cost, it's not prohibited to to develop those large lots. Uh price of development i- is at an all-time high for infrastructure costs, so it just doesn't work, and that's another reason that that you don't see it. Uh back to the traffic, you know, we're we'll, we will do a traffic study, and we will be governed uh as to what will occur and will not occur as it relates to traffic. Um uh location, I'll circle back, you know, as it relates to growth, you know, my pers- from my perspective, this couldn't be any better. It's it's a mile off the interstate. You know, as folks come and go, whether they're going to Columbia, or whether they're working in the in the facilities and new industries that are coming into Newberry, they're right, they're ready accessible within within a mile from the interstate. So if you're gonna entertain the thoughts of new housing communities in Newberry County, I mean, this thing checks a lot of boxes from from our perspective. Um the schools, the emergency services, and 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 that sort of stuff that Mrs. Moss uh addressed, I think, you know, we, they're all important issues, and I think they all need to be considered in, but but those are things that we at Great Southern don't uh we we don't control those, you you know, so um um be glad to help and do our part i- as we always do. Um and I'll just close with with the fact that, um you know, we're not new to the to Newberry County. Um you know, our company has been involved with with a number of projects. I would imagine if you pull the building permits for Newberry County, we we build as many houses as anyone, I think, uh within the county, so we have a good reputation. Uh you know, we've been very involved with the the expansion of the Boys Farm. Our company facilitated building the three new cottages that are up there that total about seventeen thousand square feet, is most growth that the Boys Farm has 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 had in, I think, like, the existence of the Boys Farm. Um so, you know, um I had someone come the other day, we just uh, you know, got involved with some donating, helping the Shriners Hospital, or the Shrine Group out of Newberry, uh raised money for something that they've been doing for thirty-eight years, and because of the COVID virus, the participation was not there, and I helped me stepped up. So, you know, I say all that just to say that, um you know, we're we're already part of Newberry County, and uh, you know, I understand the concerns, um and and um, you know, we're here to to hopefully see this through, and if I can answer any more questions, I'd be 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 glad to. So thank you for your time.
All right, anybody got any questions for Mr. Satterfield?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me point out that Taylor has found the uh zoning map here, and it looks like Mr. Boozer is correct. We see the RS down here around where the existing home is, all of this back here with the um one acre lots. This up here would be twenty thousand square.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh you said you had other homes, and you mentioned Boys Farm, but what about, do you have any other developments in Newberry County?
We uh have not, as the developer, have not developed anything in the county. We build uh down in Augsburg, it's um down Macedonia, it's in the county, it's Macedonia Church Road down at the end of Macedonia. Um had a few lake lots, but we we did a lot of the off-water stuff, and then we do a fair amount of uh scattered lots, uh part of our company. We build uh custom homes on just whatever pri- private, you know, private lots and that sort of stuff, and and we do uh do a fair amount uh throughout the county. Yes, sir.
What's the um average square footage of all of all the houses that you're planning on building?
We would, uh I said it to at the last meeting, I mean, we'd probably today kind of replicate a community, the community that we did uh down in Chapin, um on Long Pine Road, and I would say the average footage, I mean, probably, I don't hold me to it, but those are probably eighteen hundred, two thousand square feet on average. Um I I I would think, um I could get you that exact number, uh so I don't wanna disrespect him, but I I could get it for you.
What is the minimum square footage?
Here, we have not assigned any type of minimum square footage.
Okay.
Yeah, we're we're in the very early, early stages of this because of of the rezoning, you know, um we're not gonna go out and do the traffic studies and, you know, kinda get the cart ahead of the horse, if you will, if it if it's not gonna pan out, because very easily, you know, I I'll spend a hundred grand, or we even get, you know, just an upfront engineering type stuff and 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 that, those sorts of things, uh. Yes, sir.
What would be the ballpark price of a home in this development?
I can tell you that our company average is about two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I think here, they start in the high one hundreds and probably go to, the market will take us there, you you know what I'm saying? But I I could see, you know, I could see two fifty here, it just depends on all the buyer, it maybe go north of that, but uh, kind of what we do is is, you know, we build a lot of homes, and we offer a range, and then it takes off in in the market, you you know, the buyers take it right now, you know, I mean, our average, prices going up, 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 as as, but but I can tell you, you know, today's trend, um i- is, it's it's been like this before, it's been probably twenty-five years, but today, people are are including myself, are building smaller, nicer homes, uh for a number of reasons. There's a lot of folks in the market that are downsizing, and there's a lot of millennials coming on, and both of those kinda like the same kinda stuff, to be quite honest with you, uh and they actually cohabitate very good together, and so, you know, it's, that that's the the trend today, is smaller, nicer, um you know, um but it might not be that way tomorrow, you you know, but I I think it's something we'll see for a while. So average sales price, I'm guessing, but I'm I'm saying it's more like our company average, if I had to, if I had to pick a number, it's gonna be in the two twenty-five, two thirty range would would be my estimate. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, would you be receptive to limitations on minimum uh sizes of dwellings, uh those uh added as caveats or with the rezoning?
Be restricted to a minimum square footage?
Yes.
Ah, yeah, we'd have to talk through what that number is, and 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 agree upon that, but you know, this would be a um, uh and apologize, because I I, the council's changed, and I I I'd said something just before, but uh so I don't wanna repeat myself, but but for the new folks here, um just so you know, our 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 community would be uh protected with with uh CC and Rs in a in a homeowners association, uh so there's guidelines that that uh that we could establish in through those covenants and restrictions, and you know, we we do that to protect the the neighborhood, protect the surrounding landowners and that sort of stuff, so it's not something.
So you'd be open to making some of those commitments in advance, I guess?
I would be open to looking at, yes, sir.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, with that being said, thank you, Mr. Satterfield.
Thank you, guys.
Uh I don't think we have anybody else to talk regarding that on our um public work, uh type of comment? Yes, sir?
Could I make a call?
Yes, come to the uh. We typically don't do this unless you're signed up, but because of the sense of what we're dealing with, I wanna hear as much as we can.
Well, I'm making this show, I'm Ronnie Conner, uh to put it plain words, I'm strictly against how number of houses in a small area like this, and this is definitely a small area. I think the gentleman said he's been in building business for forty years, I have been in it roughly fifty years. But, because I I built nothing like y'all have, but these small lots, like I say, I'm strictly against it, you know, if somebody goes down the road to see an acre lot, uh for sale to put a house on, that is different than putting eighty houses on fifty acres. I mean, it's just, to me, ridiculous, for for an old community, I'm just flat against it. I heard tonight, stuff that I've never heard before, we we need uh rooftops. The law's always said we need homes, and we don't need rooftops, so like I say, I'm against it. But I'm not against building, you understand that, but e- even even one acre lots on, with this many houses in this area, that is way smaller than up, in my opinion. I like that question, too, if anybody got it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ronnie. All right, um council members, um back, it's been a while, did we have a motion in second yet?
We do.
Okay, all right. Any additional discussion on council members, from council members, that before we take the vote? Any questions, comments? All in favor, moving on to the second reading? All right, all opposed? It's five two with uh uh Nick Shealy and Les Hip opposed, the remaining five are in favor of at this time. All right, thank you. All right, orders?
Can I say one more thing before we go? I I wanna just, is Cromer, Mr. Cromer, is that correct? Conner, I'm sorry, I apologize. I think we owe you exactly what you asked for. Um if this does pass third reading, we owe you everything that you said, and that we 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 manage this, and we be a good part. I think there's room for for both of them to come together and be good, and so, but you're right to demand that, and I appreciate it.
That was Mr. Boozer.
Boozer, I'm sorry, yes. Uh you you were right to demand that, and I think you should hold us accountable for doing that if this passes.
All right, item number five, ordinance number oh one oh two twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a Newberry County, South Carolina Special Source Revenue Bond, industrial park project, in the principal amount of not exceeding five million, five hundred thousand dollars in one or more series. The application of the proceeds of the said bonds to defray for economic development purposes, the cost of certain infrastructure improvements, and of acquiring certain properties in Newberry County to refund outstanding amounts of Newberry County Series two thousand six special source revenue bonds and other matters relating thereto. Title only, this is the first reading, uh do we have a motion this be the first reading? And we'll get into it, but most by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Reader, Mr. Adams.
Chairman, uh as we talked about earlier on, when we were looking at the budget amendment ordinance, this um special source revenue bond ordinance pertains to section A two of the ordinance that council approved tonight for second reading. This has to do with the acquisition of property uh next to Mid Carolina Golf Course. As Mr. Johnson said, we would be, with part of this borrowing, refunding, um or actually uh remortgaging two point one million dollars of existing debt on the original Mid Carolina Commerce Park, and then extending the, um, I think Debbie, we would ordinarily have paid off in oh eight, or it's, I'm sorry, twenty-eight, or twenty-five? Twenty-six. It would ordinarily have been paid off in twenty-six, so just five years from now. We'll be stretching the term, it looks like for seventeen and a half years, to include what's left to pay on the original Mid Carolina Commerce Park, and then the acquisition of the additional property next to the golf course. Uh so uh that's basically what's gonna happen. We can use county money fund balance upfront to purchase the property, uh to make the transaction happen. What this does is by May, and uh still at the high point of our cash flow cycle, it would refund five and a half million dollars of the total cost of of the project in section A two.
All right, I heard the explanation by the county administrator. Are there any questions for the county administrator, or any questions? All right, uh hearing none, um all in favor of this being the first reading? It is unanimous. All right, uh thank you. Uh item number six, appointments, are there any appointments? None of this, uh Mr. Hip?
I wanna uh thank Ms. Davenport for providing us uh the list of of our committees and current appointments. However, uh some of the committees, I may not have someone appointed, and so it didn't show up on my list, so uh uh in, if I could get a revision, there's some appointments that may be open that I'm not aware of. I've got a list of all those in my district that I have somebody serving on, but there may be some openings, and that's what I I need to ask for the rest of that.
All right, any other comments on the appointments? Executive session is not needed, am I correct, Mr. Adams? Public comments, all right, we have some additional public comments on other things now, so let me go back and um Dr. Pedner? Dr. Chris Pedner? Isolation of nursing homes?
Two people just walked out. I don't know that that was part of that.
They didn't skip to the restroom.
All right, well, if they come back in, we'll come back to them then. Um Mr. James Wimmer, Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance?
I have to meet you, enjoy talking to you, but then. That was all I got. You did not have any more? I'll just just pass it down. Everybody got one?
I got one.
Okay.
Somebody else to?
That's me.
Face the doctor. All right. All right, thank you, counsel, for allowing me this opportunity to speak on this uh on this ordinance, and congratulations to the new members and their election. Uh this ordinance I'm bringing to you is called the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance, and in light of what's going on with the uh current admini- or the new administration in DC, that campaigned on infringing on our Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens, gun owners, by bans of registration, confiscation of firearms and accessories, we the people present this Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance to you to stop this government overreach. Our founding
Our founding fathers put forth the second, ninth, tenth, and fourteenth amendment in the Constitution for purpose. Our elected officials that we sent to DC are turning a deaf ear to us. This is where the local government can step in and, and right that wrong. The ordinance recognizes the commandeering hand of governments. In court case of Pence versus United States, we're held, uh, quote, "The government may neither issue directives requiring the state to address particular problems nor command the state auxiliars for those of their political subdivisions to administer or enforce a federal required regula- regu- regulatory program," end quote. Our local government has the authority to refuse to cooperate with the state with federal foreign laws that violate our right to reclaim a Second Amendment sanctuary for law-abiding citizens in their cities and counties. Therefore, it will be up to our local government to protect their Second Amendment rights provided by the U.S. Constitution and South Carolina Constitution by adopting and passing this ordinance. Um, I understand that, that when I proposed the, um, resolution back in December, what it was, this went on to the, uh, Public Safety and Courts Committee, which don't meet until, um, April. Uh, I'm asking to kind of put this on the fast track, and we have this, uh, first reading on this. If you, uh, adopt it and, and format to the s- uh, county's, uh, format for ordinance, and have this, uh, first reading in the, in the next meeting in, uh, in February.
There is actually a meeting for that committee on the...
Monday night.
Yeah, it's this coming Monday night. I, I know I am, I don't know if we're up to it, but we be on Monday night, this coming Monday night. Which, which committee? Public Safety.
Todd, Johnny Matt, and me.
What is it?
Todd, Johnson, Johnny Matt, Scurry, and me are on that committee.
Okay, and the, uh, the meeting, of course, the meeting will be in February, but the next one's not until April?
There's going to be one Monday night.
And then the next one will be when?
Yes.
April, then July. Uh, I, I request that this be, uh, fact tracked and put on the standard or regular, uh, uh, council meetings for the year.
Okay, well...
All right, council members, uh, all right, we got this Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance. What are the wishes of council at this point?
I, 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 we spoke today on the phone, I am absolutely one hundred percent, uh, for the Second Amendment rights. Um, just in flipping through the ordinance, I, I noted the penalty is not something this council could impose, even if we chose to enact it, because it's greater than a magistrate can handle, and we don't have the authority to impose something that goes to a higher court. Uh, so what I would say is I make a motion that we defer it to our legal staff for review and, and the advice from our legal staff on how we could move forward. Um, and, uh, again, I'm, I'm in complete support of anything to do with first, any of me, our, our constitution is sacred, and so I would be in support of that, but I think it needs some review to how it fits for us, because this looks like a generic template, and I think we would have to make it fit to what we wanted and what would apply to state law, if it's even possible. So I'd like to, to defer to Mr. Toffiker, uh, I'd make a motion that we do that.
And then would you like to have feedback at that, uh, Ja- uh, Monday night, Monday night meeting, if possible?
No, Jay says no way. Now, I think that's a little big ass to...
It, it is, it's a lot to take in that quick, so, um, all right, so, uh, you heard the recommendation of, uh, Councilman, um, Johnson. Uh, we have agreement on that. Anybody want?
Yeah, I second that.
Do we, Mr. Hippe? Can we at least, uh, establish a target date instead of just kind of opening to go find out something? How about, let's, uh, maybe either, Mr. Toffiker could give us a, a date by which he thinks he can have this done?
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Hippe, I looked at this one last time and had some issues at that point. And I thought we resolved it with the resolution that was passed, so I didn't move any further with it. I, I hate hazard guess, I know Mr. Wimmer doesn't want to hear this, but they cited, I don't know, maybe ten Supreme Court cases in here. I'd have to read each one of those and see whether or not what they're saying it says is actually what it said, or to tell you what this council could do, what Newberry County could do. So I'd say, you know, I'd feel comfortable if they gave me at least three weeks, just because there are other things that I'm working on that I can't push back and say this. Unless you, you, you can say it actually, I work for Mr. Adams, so if he tells me, make this happen every week, I'll do my best to make it happen every week, but when he says that, there are other things I'm going to say, I'm sorry, I can't do anything on that one at all. But there's a healthy amount of research in this.
All right, um...
For, for my part, uh, I think three weeks would be acceptable.
Could you go, could you go home and stay with you?
I'd have to keep the mother-in-law out of it.
I think you just went too far.
All right, uh, let's just, um...
I mean, obviously, if I can get it before that, I'll be glad to...
Sure. I, I just think we need to understand what our guidelines, what our rules are, and what we can do lawfully so that if we pass something, it's, it's going to accomplish your purpose.
We don't need to be making knee-jerk decisions.
Absolutely.
Well, it is a lot to endure.
Yes, sir.
I'm standing there, and, uh, and, uh, I've said it's, uh, it is, I think, at this point, time-sensitive, so do what you can with it and, and, uh, get it passed.
At least it's moving forward.
That's right, got it moving, we appreciate you bringing this forward to our attention, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Wimmer.
I don't think they ever voted on a motion.
Um, I don't really think we have, have to have a motion on this.
I think we had a motion in the second, oh, you're good, just to take it, okay.
We need any?
All right.
We'll just defer, we'll just defer to the administrative team.
I like it.
All right, um, let's see. Doctor Pen- Pender? Pedner? Pierce, okay. I guess the old joke with doctor signatures, my friend, I'm sorry, but, uh... Isolation of nursing homes, so, all right, we'll, we'll welcome you to the podium, you state your name, and we're good to go, my friend.
I am Covus Pierce, I'm a retired gynecologist, and the subject of the COVID virus is very dear and dear to me. There's been a lot of pros and cons. They say follow the science, one person tells us this is the science, other one says, no, this is the science, other one says, there is no science. That our nursing home patients have been put in prison, literally. This started roughly nine months ago. These patients are isolated, where no one can visit them, and it's inhuman, if nothing else. I've been told on many occasions that when my opinion is wanted, it will be given to me. That this is basically what has transpired with the COVID virus. COVID is a parainovirus, like chickenpox, like common cold, like everything it would come in contact with every day. What is perfect, what is not perfect, is impossible to say. If you compare the statistics of the influenza virus prior to the, the year prior to this, and the COVID virus, the mortality and morbidity is a different thing. We need to use common sense in how to deal with it, which all of us are doing. The cruelty of the people has to be figured into this. How can you take someone who is an old man, an old woman, and say, we've got you, and there's nothing we can do about you except not let anybody see? I have a relative who took care of for seven years before he was admitted to a nursing facility. Took care of him as long as we could. Now, he's been there for several years, and no one can visit. Had a neighborhood relative who died within the last month, who begged every day to please at least let somebody see me. He died isolated. I think I have qualifications on both sides of this thing, from the standpoint of being over sixty-five, and a little bit of medical knowledge. I would urge this group to take some action, whatever we can, to try to say that these people at least die in comfort and in caring facilities. I was told today that someone being followed by hospice was open to visitation because of being on hospice, and I was told today, sorry, visitation is closed. What difference? Well, this individual is not immediately dying, who can say what death is for him? But we can at least be humane, and that is not bleak. What can be done about this? Told that bureaucracy says, you listen to us. I'm told if we try to change it, go to the grassroots. That's us. And I would urge that you gentlemen and ladies try to speak that these people are created human. Can I answer questions?
I, I just feel the, the compassion and, uh, thank you for being so caring, and it is clear that this is such an issue for you. I don't know what this body has the authority to do, but, um, man, my heart goes out to you, and I appreciate that powerful presentation, sir.
Your name may be hard to read, but your message is very clear.
Amen.
And I, 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 I'm, I'm sure everybody else is kind of feels the same way. I see Les, you got your finger up?
Yes, Dr. Pierce, um, this reminds me, your, your plea reminds me of a conversation I had with my family physician not long ago, because I also have friends that fortunately went into the hospital and came out of the hospital. They didn't die there. However, during their stay, their family members were not allowed to see them. For weeks, they, and my concern to him, and I posed a question to him that he was unable to answer, was what process do the janitors go through that go in every day? What process do the, the doctors go through that go into that facility every day? What process do the nurses go in, that the people who are bringing supplies go through? If a family member is willing to go through the same process that a doctor, a nurse, a cleaning person, uh, a, a vendor, whatever, if a family member is willing to go through that, even at their own expense, if it's an additional expense required, then they ought to be able to do that. Logic only tells you that they're no less a threat than any of those other people I talked about. And, uh, and as my physician, being on the hospital board, I brought it to his attention, what you're talking about needs to be brought to the attention. We have three nursing homes that I'm quickly aware of in Newberry, and those nursing homes have people that come and go every day under certain circumstances. If the, the families are willing to undergo those exact same circumstances at their cost, then, I'm sorry, then it makes no other sense to me than for them to be allowed. And thank you, I mean, that, that was a, as, uh, as, uh, Mr. Johnson said, very powerful message, Dr. Pierce, thank you.
Are the, uh, nursing homes in Newberry County, are they privately owned, or are they state-owned?
Privately owned.
Yeah, because I know the governor had, had, uh, enlightened, he has allowed, uh, people to go into the state-owned fac- uh, facilities. But the private-owned facilities, I think, make their own rules.
Well, uh, you know, our, our hospital, uh, is, is kind of a unusual. We, we own the facility, and we have people managing it, uh, but, um, I don't know if they have changed those requirements, but those requirements need to be changed as well, if they haven't. Uh, and if there's anything, we may not be able to legislatively change it, but we can talk with the people that are in management. We all have representatives on the hospital board, and we ought to be talking to our representatives on the hospital board and saying, guys, you, you, you know, you can make this work, or you can just avoid the issue, but you can make it work.
Well, as you have stated, as Mr. Johnson has stated, I'm not sure what our legal implications are as far as what our power base is on it, but I think we all agree that, I mean, you're having family members that are robbed of their last Father's Day, their last Mother's Day, their last birthday, their last, I mean, it's just so many things that's being taken away from them because they're not allowed to celebrate with their family, and again, it, it's, it, it's, it's very distressing, it, it really is. Uh, I, I know a guy right now that I'm good friends with, that his mother, and, I mean, his wife and his mother-in-law are both in the nursing home at Alzheimer's units, and he has not been able to see them. And, and that's been for, as you said, many months now, and, you know, if you call again, you're talking about it, he's crying, and... Your, your story's very well taken, you're very much respected for your opinion, both professionally, and, and, and I guess your years of age, uh... I, I don't know what to say other than we will do, and I kind of like as Mr. Hippe said, we need to be talking to other people and seeing what we can do.
I am, so, I'm simply over eight, uh, over six fat, and the medical profession tells me that I am in the maximum risk for COVID virus, that I think I'm pretty healthy, so to speak, and that's opposed to a lot of people on the way.
Thank you again so much, appreciate you coming forward and talking. Wow, okay, um, item number nine, comments or requests from the county administrator? Comments or requests from council members? Mr. Shealy? Mr. Hippe? Sarah Wood? Mr. Johnson?
Exciting times for this county, I believe we're on a, on a good path forward, and, uh, it's just a blessing.
Mr. Reader? Mr. Scurry? I just started coming in because I'm working into the bad guy.
They were saving the best look until later.
That's right, the smartest till now.
Oh, well, thank you for identifying that, Les. With the mask on, all of us can look halfway decent.
We thank council for the night, our visitors, hope we all come together more and more for your community, for your county. Keep coming, keep pushing us, we'll do our best for you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to, I'd like to beg y'all for the night, for a special prayer for our sheriff that's in the hospital, hanging on in there. Could we get a solid minute of prayer just for our sheriff? Thank you.
All right, we pause for that solemn moment?
Yes, one moment, please, one minute. Amen, thank you very much, may God bless us all.
All right, with that being said, I guess I'm final, again, if all of y'all signed up and took... and took the opportunity to come to the podium, thank you so much for sharing your views, uh, they have not fallen on deaf ears, uh, of course, council does have the, uh, multifaceted responsibility of trying to juggle economic development, growth, lack of growth, controlled growth, uh, uh, as, as we've seen on that wonderful, um, Newberry now, all want grocery stores, I mean, juggling everything together for the good of the county as a whole and to make it work, uh, is, is very difficult on our end, but I will say, uh, I can speak for everybody on this council. We all want what we think is best for Newberry County, and I, I think that's why we're all in this council, that's why, I, I, I don't know why, it's got the veterans down here and all, the newbies would accept you, unless you've been there for eight years, but, uh, I, I think everybody put their name on that dotted line to try to do what they think is best for this county, and, uh, we will come to terms with that as, as time go along, but again, keep, please keep calling, please come by, please come to these meetings, uh, we're not trying to do anything to hide, we're trying to be totally transparent with our thoughts and our actions, so, again, thank you for coming. Uh, with that, uh, our future meetings are Public Safety, of course, on one twenty-five twenty-one, Public Works and Planning on two twen- uh, one, uh, twenty-one. The next county council meeting will be on February third at six PM on two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you all again for coming.